From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting, originating from the Kern County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy, and our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Okay. Board to reconvene. Good morning and welcome to the 9:00 AM regular board session for Kern County Board of Supervisors, Tuesday, November 18. We're going to begin as we always do with a roll call.
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Parlier?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez?
Here, thank you. We're going to move to our flag salute this morning, and I have truly an extraordinary, extraordinary bio to share with you that floored me yesterday in learning things about someone I've known for some time and had no idea how truly remarkable of a human being that you are.
Oh my God.
My God. Kate, this is astonishing, and I mean it, and I mean it with all humility and with serious due respect. The crowd is going to gasp as well, I'm sure of it. In November of 1988, Kate Zimmerman joined the Minnesota Army National Guard as a member of the 257th Military Police Company. You always acted like a cop. Always. You know it's true, Chris. While drilling with her unit through the balance of her senior year of high school, she was selected to appear in a "Be All That You Can Be" Army commercial. After completing basic training and military police training at Fort McClellan, Alabama, she returned to her unit until she was offered a spot in military intelligence as an active-duty soldier. She started her active service and training at the Defense Language Institute in Monterey, California, high IQ stuff. After the completion of her training as an electronic warfare signals intelligence analyst at Goodfellow AFB in Texas, she was shipped to United States Army Security Agency Field Station Augsburg in Germany as a member of the 712 Military Intelligence Battalion where she worked in concert with the National Security Agency on targets in the former Eastern Europe and work needed during and after the collapse of the former Soviet Union. Her work at Field Station Glabigan resulted in her unit receiving the Travis Trophy, the NSA's top award for outstanding U.S. cryptologic contributions in the field. Kate completed her service at the rank of specialist in the spring of 1994. I had the privilege of meeting Ms. Zimmerman when she was a deputy district attorney and I was a deputy public defender. I was always quite terrified of you. I see now why. I see why, clear as day. As I read through your bio yesterday with county staff, I had to stop midway and say, "I think Kate Zimmerman is a genius." I have just, what is her IQ? And county council retorted back, "Well, she was a Jeopardy champion." Yeah, that's smart. I am very humbled to read your bio. I am very grateful for your service to this nation and to this community, and I am astonished, simply and entirely astonished at your accomplishments. You are way smarter than me and just about everybody I know, truth be told, and that you have given those assets to this community is really just an impeccable line of service and contribution to humanity and to this community. Thank you for your service, thank you for being here today, and for leading us in the flag salute. Thank you for your service, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Wow.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And God bless Alex Trebek.
Thank you.
She still acts like military police. And you all know it's true. Thank you, Kate. Okay, we're going to move to our Pet of the Week, where our Animal Services Director, Nick Cullen, will bring out the most precious person, entity in this board chambers. As is always the case every week, who do you have with you today?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I brought with me Edward.
Oh, Edward. He's an intellectual.
He sure is. Edward is about a nine-week-old terrier pup, and he's available for adoption right now at the Kern County Animal Shelter.
My goodness, and what will that cost a soon-to-be very happy, fulfilled family?
His adoption fee is just $30, and that includes everything you need to be a responsible pet owner.
Oh my, so shots and...
License, and he's going to be neutered.
And no new babies.
Microchip, no puppies.
No, no puppies. Okay, well, he looks so comfortable with you here, Nick. What a natural you are, a great name too, Edward. Okay, Edward, I hope that you will appreciate lots of intellectual discussions from your future owner, I just feel it from you, that you have the goods for it. Best of luck to you, Edward, in your next forever home, and thank you for what you will do for whatever family you'll be a part of. Okay, we're going to move to our consent agenda. There are agendas at the back of the room for those of you wishing to follow along. Consent matters are listed with a capital C, capital A, and they are considered by county family to be routine and non-controversial. And of course, if a member of the public feels otherwise, we want to hear from you in that regard. But members, but matters that are consent will be handled with one vote unless otherwise indicated, because we don't want to hold up the rest of the agenda by routine matters. On page two, consent matters include items six through seven. On page three, all items listed, eight through 14. On page four, all items listed, 15 through 21. On page five, all items listed, 29. On page six, all items listed, 30 through 31. Are there any members of the public who feel that consent matters are not routine and controversial today, and non-controversial, and would like to add input, insight, or have questions about? Okay, seeing none, I will ask my colleagues for a motion on consent.
Motion to consent.
Thank you, Supervisor Couch, thank you Supervisor Parlier for your second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Okay. Moving right along to resolutions and proclamations. Item number one is a proclamation for November 2025 as National Adoption Awareness Month in Kern County. This matter will be handled by Supervisor Peters.
Thank you, Madam Chair, motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting, originating from the Kern County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy, and our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Board of Supervisors Meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene. Good morning and welcome to the 9:00 AM regular board session for Kern County Board of Supervisors, Tuesday, November 18. We're going to begin as we always do with a roll call. Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Parlier?
Here.
Supervisor Flores? Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez? Here, thank you. We're going to move to our flag salute this morning, and I have truly an extraordinary, extraordinary bio to share with you that floored me yesterday in learning things about someone I've known for some time and had no idea how truly remarkable of a human being that you are.
Oh, my God.
My God. Kate, this is astonishing, and I mean it, and I mean it with all humility and with serious due respect. The crowd is going to gasp as well, I'm sure of it. In November of 1988, Kate Zimmerman joined the Minnesota Army National Guard as a member of the 257th Military Police Company. You always acted like a cop. You know it's true, Chris. While drilling with her unit through the balance of her senior year of high school, she was selected to appear in a "Be All That You Can Be" Army commercial. After completing basic training and military police training at Fort McClellan, Alabama, she returned to her unit until she was offered a spot in military intelligence as an active-duty soldier. She started her active service and training at the Defense Language Institute in Monterey, California. High IQ stuff. After the completion of her training as an electronic warfare signals intelligence analyst at Goodfellow AFB in Texas, she was shipped to United States Army Security Agency Field Station Augsburg in Germany as a member of the 712 Military Intelligence Battalion, where she worked in concert with the National Security Agency on targets in the former Eastern Europe and work needed during and after the collapse of the former Soviet Union. Her work at Field Station Glabigan resulted in her unit receiving the Travis Trophy, the NSA's top award for outstanding U.S. cryptologic contributions in the field. Kate completed her service at the rank of Specialist in the spring of 1994. I had the privilege of meeting Ms. Zimmerman when she was a deputy district attorney and I was a deputy public defender. I was always quite terrified of you. I see now why. I see why clear as day. As I read through your bio yesterday with county staff, I had to stop midway and say, "I think Kate Zimmerman is a genius." I have just, what is her IQ? And county council retorted back, "Well, she was a Jeopardy champion." Yeah, that's smart. I am very humbled to read your bio. I am very grateful for your service to this nation and to this community, and I am astonished, simply and entirely astonished at your accomplishments. You are way smarter than me and just about everybody I know, truth be told, and that you have given those assets to this community is really just an impeccable line of service and contribution to humanity and to this community. Thank you for your service. Thank you for being here today and for leading us in the flag salute. Thank you for your service, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Wow.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And God bless Alex Trebek. She still acts like military police. And you all know it's true. Thank you, Kate. Okay, we're going to move to our Pet of the Week, where our Animal Services Director, Nick Cullen, will bring out the most precious person, entity in this board chambers. As is always the case every week, who do you have with you today?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I brought with me Edward.
Oh, Edward. He's an intellectual.
He sure is. Edward is a, about a nine-week-old terrier pup, and he's available for adoption right now at the Kern County Animal Shelter.
My goodness. And what will that cost a soon-to-be, very happy, fulfilled family?
His adoption fee is just $30, and that includes everything you need to be a responsible pet owner.
Oh, my, so shots and...
License, and he's going to be neutered.
And no new babies.
Microchip, no puppies.
No, no puppies. Okay, well, he looks so comfortable with you here, Nick. What a natural you are. Great name too, Edward. Okay, Edward, I hope that you will appreciate lots of intellectual discussions from your future owner. I just feel it from you, that you have the goods for it. Best of luck to you, Edward, in your next forever home, and thank you for what you will do for whatever family you'll be a part of. Okay, we're going to move to our consent agenda. There are agendas at the back of the room for those of you wishing to follow along. Consent matters are listed with a capital C, capital A, and they are considered by county family to be routine and non-controversial. And of course, if a member of the public feels otherwise, we want to hear from you in that regard. But matters that are consent will be handled with one vote unless otherwise indicated, because we don't want to hold up the rest of the agenda by routine matters. On page two, consent matters include items six through seven. On page three, all items listed eight through 14. On page four, all items listed 15 through 21. On page five, all items listed 29. On page six, all items listed 30 through 31. Are there any members of the public who feel that consent matters are not routine and controversial today, and non-controversial, and would like to add input, insight, or have questions about? Okay, seeing none, I will ask my colleagues for a motion on consent.
Motion on consent.
Thank you, Supervisor Couch. Thank you Supervisor Parlier for your second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Okay. Moving right along to resolutions and proclamations. Item number one is a proclamation for November 2025 as National Adoption Awareness Month in Kern County. This matter will be handled by Supervisor Peters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
It's my honor this morning to be here with Lito and his team from the Department of Human Services to proclaim November as National Adoption Awareness Month. They've celebrated this for over 20 years, and this is going to be a very exciting one. From what I understand, there are going to be over 50 families that are going to be going through their finalization of the adoption process this month. So I will turn it over to Cliff Taylor to talk a little bit more about it, but first I wanted to share this proclamation. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed November 2025 as National Adoption Awareness Month, and the recognition has been entered into the official board minutes and signed by our Honorable Chair, Letitia Perez.
Chairwoman Perez, esteemed members of the board, my name is Clifton Taylor, and I am the Program Director of the Kern County Adoption Agency. On November 21st, the Department of Human Services will host our 22nd Annual National Adoption Day event, celebrating the children and families who are part of the adoption process here in Kern County. We are honored to work alongside our valued partners who have joined me here today. Behind me are, from the Kern County Superior Court, Tara Leal, Ally Rickles, Erica Wilson, Shelby Deek, and Kristin Davis. From CASA of Kern County, we have Heaven Vasquez and Adriana Campos. From Coininia Family Services, we have Stephanie Hemerson and Norma Rhodes. From Aspiranet, we have Carrie Ontavirals and Myra Agüano. From Kern Bridges, we have Marina Hernandez and Jim Van Der Swan. And from the Bakersfield Angels, we have April Reed and Jen Young. Additionally, I would like to recognize the Care Foundation, who were notable, who were not able to join us today, but this celebration would not be possible without their support year after year. This event is not just a celebration, but a recognition of the lifelong commitment of adoptive families who are creating brighter futures for children in need of a permanent home. On National Adoption Day, we'll begin with a press conference inside the Honorable Judge Christine Norris's courtroom at 9:30 AM, where she will proceed over the first adoption of the day. Dozens of children will be legally adopted into their forever families, and it will be a joyous occasion for everyone. Families adopting through the Family Law Court will also join us in an outdoor celebration after the court hearings, creating a welcoming environment for all involved. National Adoption Awareness Month is about recognizing adoption and the importance of adoption and the focus of the needs here in Kern County. In Kern County, we have over 2,000 children within foster care, and these, many of these children will ultimately need a permanent, stable home. These children range from newborns to young adults and come to our care due to abuse, neglect, and face many unique challenges. While reunification with birth parents is always our first goal, when that's not possible, adoption is the next best option for providing these children with safe, permanent, and loving families. I want to acknowledge the role of adoptive families. Today, we especially want to honor the adoptive parents, who's individuals who open their hearts and homes to children in need. We also recognize the dedication of relatives as foster parents who are willing to make a lifelong commitment to provide children with love, stability, and a sense of belonging. Today, we are joined by Veronica Modesto Ramos, who have adopted multiple times, but I will let them share their story, and I'd like to invite them to the podium now to say a few words.
Hi, good morning. We are the Family Ramos. Yes, we have adopted multiple, multiple times. My first adoption was placed in a state of Colorado. I have, our family is made out of multicultural, but one thing I do have to say is that we have 100% always support from the social workers. They have always been there by our sides when we, we need their help. Children, our children have came with some with, they're okay, but there's also children that have come with disabilities. We have adopted seven children. Our young one is two years old, and she's also my granddaughter. We just adopted her in September. So it's a great privilege for us to be helping. We take it as saving lives, because these children go through so much harm, you know, during their, their stay in their homes, that they need some love, they need some support, and we, that's where we come in as foster parents. I was not able to conceive children my, my own, but God gave me the privilege for me to become a mother this way. So it's a great privilege for me and my husband to be able to raise these children. All of our children have got their careers, they're all finished college, I'm a grandmother now, so it's, it's a great privilege. Right now, we do have a placement that is two children that needed a home. We have never dealt with children with autism, but let me tell you something, I will not go back. I mean, this little boy has stole my heart, and he's only four years old. But we have gone through so much to get him the help with Kern Regional Center, our social, our social workers, their supervisors, and right now, we have him in a school, had his speech, his understanding now, he has controlled his, his way of being, you know, and it's just, he was a little boy that he would start hitting everybody. He'd just, there was no control, but we found out that he just needed some parents that will support him, and his sister. So it's a great privilege for us to be, having these children in our home, and we look forward for more blessings in our family. My husband.
Good morning. My name is Modesto Ramos. I am the husband of Veronica, and I'm honored to be a foster parent as well as a adoptive father as well. I was a field engineer for Halliburton Company, and then I, I took my semi-retirement, and I went back to college to study psychology as well as, as family counseling. And they asked me, "Why this topic? What are you going to do with this? You will never be able to use it." Well, nevertheless, I found myself working with the children, trying to help them psychologically as well as counsel with them for the situation they might be going through or that I have gone through. We were, two and a half years ago, we were in Wisconsin. That's when we received a call about this little girl that needed a home, and my wife, Hart, went after that call immediately, and I was kind of considering, you know, I just should go ahead and enjoy my retirement, and just pull off a little bit. And they even asked me, "Aren't you too old to consider this, to, you know, take over the responsibility of being a foster parent?" So I, I, all those thoughts were in my mind, and I said, "You know what? I can do this." And I want to tell you one thing that I learned through the Bible, and this is what the Bible says in Psalm 82. I said, "Defend the weak and the fatherless, uphold the cause of the poor and the oppressed; rescue the weak and the needy, deliver them from the hand of the wicked." And that verse stayed in my mind, and I told my wife, "Let's do this." Well, just two months ago, we adopted a little girl, beautiful little child, and I have the honor to name her after my mother, who passed away about in 2008, and today, she's, has, carries the name, the legacy of my mom, and I'm honored to say that I am proud to be a foster and a parent as well as a, a adopted father. I don't regret anything, but I do encourage anyone that has the desire to do so to continue, go after desire. Your home will be blessed, your life will be blessed, and I can say that it's been great in our home. We enjoy our children, we have a great time with them. The most beautiful thing is when you walk into their house and call you "Papi," "Daddy," they come and hug you. The little boy that my wife's speaking about, we, I dropped him off at the bus stop, and I took him inside the, the bus, and he said, "Daddy, can I get a hug?" "Of course you can." And it's, "Can, can you give me a kiss?" So he gave me a kiss on my, on my face, and, and it was great. I went home so happy, it made my day. And just to close this, just a few months ago, we had a 16-year-old young lady, and she also has her issues or her disabilities as well. And I've been working with her in regards of her troubles, and I knocked on the door of her bedroom, and she allowed me to come in there, and she was sitting in the middle of the bed, and I knew she was crying, I knew she was hurting, and the only thing I told her was, "It is okay to be different. Remember, you're not the only one in this world that is different." And all she did was, she hugged me, she cried on my shoulder, and she told me, "Thank you for understanding me." Thank you very much.
That's God's work.
I'd again like just to thank the Ramoses for being here today and sharing that beautiful, touching story. We could not do the work we do without committed, dedicated, loving foster parents like you that will help our children in their lives. Adoption is not just a legal process, it's a life-changing decision that creates lasting bonds of love and security for children who have faced unimaginable challenges. Thank you for supporting these efforts and joining us in celebrating the families who make adoption a reality for the children in Kern County. Thank you.
Beautiful. What a beautiful, beautiful story, and what a beautiful spirit your family has, is so evident this morning. Thank you so very much. Wow, that was beautiful. That's God's work right there. You better believe it. Item number two this morning is a certificate of recognition for Phil Frainey for 40 years of service on the Kern County Employees Retirement Association, also known as CASIRA in Kern County. Supervisor Couch will make this presentation.
Thank you. I'll make a motion on the proclamation, but I want to ask our CIO something. I believe it's either 42 or 43 years, and so long, we don't really know. So I want the, the minutes to accurately reflect how long Phil has served, so could I ask you to make that change when, when we find out what the...
No vote.
Oh, there's no vote? I'm sorry. Just going to make a proclamation, make a presentation. I'm going to go down there and say some, a few words and turn it over to Phil. Phil says it's 43 years, by the way. He would know, okay?
You look and seem too young for 43 years on that board. I mean it.
I know, it's a kind of, it's kind of irritating, isn't it?
It's, it's, it's striking.
And he's, he's still got a month to go.
Oh, wow. Amazing.
So I have some, I have some presentation, but I really just kind of want to speak to you about Phil from my perspective and from the board's perspective. Phil, it's going to sound a little bit like a memorial, but it's not, okay? Because clearly, you're right here. But when, when you, when you sit back and you look at the service that he, the, the public service to our country, to our city, to our county, in its entirety, it's really sort of awe-inspiring. He spent three years in the Army, first of all. Went to BC, did three years in the Army, then he went to Cal State. Then, fresh out of college, he went to the Bakersfield City School District, ran the accounting department for five years. Then he spent five years, I think, he can correct, he can clean this up if I get some of this wrong. Then he spent five years in the Otter Controllers Department. Then he spent five years as the Assistant Treasurer-Tax Collector. Then he got elected Treasurer-Tax Collector five times, so there's 20 more years.
Wow.
After that, he spent 18 years as the retiree. Now, by, by the way, when you are elected as the Treasurer-Tax Collector, you have an automatic position on the CASIRA board. Then after that, he spent another, I believe it's 18 years, as the retiree representative on the CASIRA board. And the chairman pointed out, CASIRA, for those that are listening that don't know, is the Kern County Employee Retirement Association. It's the board that oversees the portfolio and the operations of making sure that county retirees get their retirement benefit. So 43 years of experience just at the CASIRA level, at that board level, is unfortunately walking out the door when Phil retires. And when I heard he was going to retire, I actually called him and I said, "Are you sure you can't stick around for at least another term?" And, but he, he was, he basically said, "I've got a family, I've got kids, grandkids, and even a couple of great-granddaughters." He still had, and the memory, he even knows all their names.
It's because he's aging backwards.
And he just wants to spend time with them, and I, and I, you can't, can't really blame him for that, that's the kind of guy he is. I am proud to have been able to serve with him, I am proud to be able to call him a friend, and I'm proud to be able to present this to you today, Phil, and it says 42, we're going to fix that. We'll get you a new one, but I just wanted to, I wanted to be the one to present this to you because I've gotten to know you and appreciate you, and again, proud to call you a friend and proud to present this to you, and so I'll turn this over to you, and if I screwed any of that up, would you please fix it? As kindly as you know how.
Thank you very much, Dan. Remarkable job, and I very much appreciate it. Pretty humble following the, the, feel pretty humble following the two people that have preceded me today.
Fair enough.
And good morning, Madam Chairman and members of the board, all three of you, right now. But with that, before I start to make any other remarks, I would like to introduce my major support group and members of my family. I have both my great-granddaughters on the second row, at the end here, Angelina and Elena. We try to act and behave well while their, Nana keeps an eye on all three of us. So then I have my granddaughter Kylie and her friend Freddie next to them, and then I have my daughter Shelley, who's been a school teacher for, how many years, Shelley?
31.
31 years, and she's great with the children. She gets them when they come from the house to the school, kindergarten children, so she teaches them a lot. And her husband, Robert, and then my rock, my best friend, loved my life for all, for over 50 years, and will be married 50 years in January, my wife, Dina.
Wow.
Stand up, Dina, come on.
You're a lucky man, Phil.
Thank you. She wanted to stand up, so I thought I'd give her that opportunity. So moving along, I don't want to go into all the, the details of what I have learned, but briefly, in the military, I went to school for almost a year, radar computer tech. Then, as you know, when you're in the service, they, they own you. So, and then after that, I became an auto-visual tech, and then I became an MP. So I got a lot of experiences, then I went back to Cal State, finished up in business and accounting. And then after that, I went to City School District and ran... And then after that, I went to City School District and ran city schools, I think it's still the largest elementary school district in California, ran their accounting department. So I learned a lot. I was fortunate to work in my dad's accounting firm, my uncle's in my dad's accounting firm when I was even in junior high during tax time and things like that. So I had some of the tools and some of the tools from college. But throughout my career, I noticed that you're always learning, always growing, and always facing your task with purpose, with passion, and with vision. Looking forward to attaining your goals and achieving the goals. And it's always performed by a team of individuals. I may have been a member of the team, always a member, and many times a leader of the team in all those responsibilities I've had. After the Army, and then I went to city schools. Then after that, I went to the Audit Controllers Office as a systems accountant, bringing in the FMS system, which many people are familiar with, Management Information System, that umbrellaed all the functions of accounting in the county and brought them in one umbrella of an integrated system, which was a challenge. And with that, I was constantly learning. I had to buy a book about information technology and information systems before I even started the project. So it wasn't a big, I guess, I guess, as to the curriculum in college, hadn't really raised its head as being something that really needed to be taught in the business schools. After that, I was hired as the Assistant Treasurer. Being Assistant Treasurer, you had the responsibility of the county treasury, investments and its functions. You administered the daily deferred compensation plan, or 457. And then you also worked in the area of retirement. We had a three-person office, an open office, which was very scarce in resources. And we serviced thousands of employees. We had about two hundred million in assets. Today, we have more than six point five billion dollars in assets. We service over twenty thousand employees. It's an amazing operation. I've been fortunate enough to be involved from the nuts and bolts. We, I was involved in bringing the technology and computer applications into that office. At the same time, I was being either assistant or for the five terms, treasurer and tax collector, also bringing in technology, bringing in tax sales from a physical auction to a global auction on the internet. Kern County was the first, by the way. But that was all a team effort. Everybody was involved. We were always looking for the goal. So back to retirement, retirement has been very good to me. Learned a lot. Spent the last almost forty years as a member of many, many boards of retirement. Met many different people from the, not only the public sector, fellow employees of the county, but also appointed members from the citizenry and the voting public. And it was growing, it's always a growing process, always learning process, and always a lot of challenges. But you should be very proud of a retirement operation that's well-run these days, and we have a very responsible and dedicated board to manage those assets and administration that is always forward-thinking, looking at being most efficient, but also safeguarding those very important assets that all of us members appreciate, not so much while we're working, but when we retire, we sure do. So briefly, I thank you for my time, and I thank you for the recognition. And I hope the county and also the retirement system all the success. Thank you very much.
That is astonishing. Phil, you have a cool name, too, Phil Frainy. It just has a cool vibe to it.
Phil Frainy, yes. My real legal name's Philip David Frainy. My mother always called me that when I was in big trouble.
You seem like a guy who has it all, Phil. I mean it. I mean it. And you're so shy, I don't know how you ran for office. What a beautiful Kern County family.
By the way, Chair, I want to make sure I recognize there are some CASIRA staff members in the back.
Very good.
So could you guys stand, just so everybody could recognize you?
Oh, wow.
That's, those are the folks that run it and manage the investments and all of that. There's more of them, hopefully, back at the office. But they're here today because Phil has been so supportive of them, and they wanted to show their support. So thank you guys for being here.
Great, the CASIRA family, thank you.
Do you want to get a picture with them?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you should. Do it. Come on down.
Make a cheer.
Thank you. Well done, Supervisor Couch. Well done. These are the brainiacs of CASIRA. How nice. Yeah, I was going to say, spread it out. Yeah, good, good, good. That's good. I think I'm in the back of that picture, too, so I'm happy about that. Thank you for all you do for Kern County workers, family members. Thank you.
Thank you. Forty-two years deserved a little bit of extra time. Thank you.
Forty-three, Couch.
Forty-three, that's right. Sorry.
Oh, really? Oh, we have a corrected certificate on its way down. So thank you to our clerk. That was fast. Thank you so much. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you very much.
And congratulations for January. That's right around the corner. You are truly blessed. You are truly blessed. You probably more than your wife. No, just kidding. You're blessed, both of you. Okay. A lot of work, most definitely. Okay. So item number three also does not require a vote. It's a certificate of recognition for the Bakersfield... Oh, no, 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 we're not doing that. Actually, item number three, we are moving to December ninth. So we will not hear item number three today. We're moving to December ninth, withdrawn. Okay. So we're going to move now to the public presentations portion of this morning. And public presentations are reserved for members of the public who would like to address this body on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the Kern County Board of Supervisors but are not on today's specific agenda. We actually do not have agenda items remaining here, so really, anything within our jurisdiction is fair game. Please come forward. We do have some handouts that our clerk provided that I believe are from our concerned citizens. And so we have those in front of us. And good morning.
Good morning.
The floor is yours. Please state and spell your name for the record.
Glenn Clayton, C.L.A.Y.T.O.N. Good morning, Madam Chair and board members. Thank you for all that you do. Staff, thank you for all that you do. This morning, concerned citizens are addressing two letters from both the California State Assembly Member Carl DiMaio regarding the California Voter ID Initiative. You've received both copies of these letters. First letter is dated August seventh this year. It is to, this letter is to the California Attorney General. Pursuant to Article Two, Section D, attendee of the California Constitution, we are submitting the attached amendment to propose statewide initiative 25 triple zero seven, the California Voter ID Initiative. After feedback from stakeholders, we are amending the text to clarify one of the provisions in the initiative. Included with this submission, we are required a proponent affidavit signed by the proponents of this measure pursuant to Sections ninety zero one, nine, six, oh, eight of the California Elections Code. Second letter dated October twenty-two this year is addressed to the California Secretary of State. Certification of twenty-five percent signature threshold has been met. That's twenty-five dash triple zero seven eight one. Under current law, when registering to vote, individuals must state, under penalty of perjury, they are a United States citizens and provide information to verify their identity, such as their birthday, their driver's license, social security number. This measure would amend the California Constitution to further require that voters present government-issued identification at the polls or the last four digits of a government-issued identification number when voting by mail. The state provider voter identification cards on their request and election officials annual report percentage of each county's voters whose citizenship they have verified. And that's the twenty-five percent of eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and forty-one required signatures. I'd like to turn it over to my good friend, Dennis McLean, who will follow me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton. Good seeing you. Dennis, good morning.
Dennis McLean, M.C., capital L.E.A.N. Morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors. This initiative is to enforce existing voter qualifications, including U.S. citizenship established by California's Constitution. The people hereby amend the California Constitution, A, to promote public confidence and trust in the electoral process, which encourages civic participation and supports a healthy democracy. B, to deter and detect voter fraud by maintaining accurate voter registration records and confirming eligibility to vote. And C, to minimize the risk of voter impersonation by requiring proof of identity to vote. Section Two, Article Two of the California Constitution is amended to add Section 3.1 to read as follows. The Secretary of State and county officials shall have the duty to maintain accurate voter registration lists, shall use best efforts to verify citizenship using government data, shall annually report what percentage of each county's voter rolls have been citizenship verified. B, each time a voter casts a ballot in person in any election in the state, the voter shall present a government-issued identification, or, if voting by mail, the voter shall provide the last four digits of a unique identifying form, government-issued identification number that matches the one designated by the voter for their registration. C, the legislation shall also promptly enact a law to provide military, for voting for military and overseas voters consistent with federal law, and ensure that all state and local officials comply and support the compliance with this section. There are more details on this initiative and the handout you received earlier. Next speaker, Mr. Russ Person. Thank you.
Thank you. Morning, Mr. Person. Welcome.
It's Ron.
Ron.
Ron Barger, B.A.R.G.E.R. Thursday, November third, 2025, a press release. Justice Department sues Governor Gavin Newsom for California's race-based redistricting plan. The Justice Department announced today that it filed legal action against Governor Newsom and Secretary of State Shirley Weber for the state of California's newly-adopted redistricting plan enacted with the passage of Proposition 50. The suit alleged that the plan mandates racially gerrymandered congressional districts in violation of the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. Proposition 50 amends the California Constitution, allowing the legislature to draw a new congressional district map. Substantial evidence, including that in the legislative record and the public statements, indicate that the legislature created a new map in which Latino demographics and racial considerations were predominated in violation of the Equal Protection Clause. California's redistricting scheme is a brazen power grab that tramples on civil rights and mocks the democratic process, says Attorney General Pam Bondi. Quote, "Governor Newsom's attempt to entrench one-party rule and silence millions of Californians will not stand." To continue is Mr. Russ Person.
Now we have Mr. Person.
Good morning.
Morning. Welcome.
Madam Chair, Board of Supervisors, Russell, R.U.S.S.E.L.L. Person, P.E.R.S.O.N.
Thank you.
Thank you. Race cannot be used as a proxy to advance political interests, but that is precisely what the California General Assembly did with Prop 50, said Jesus Osseta, Principal Deputy Assistant Attorney General for Civil Rights. Californians resold an illegal, racially gerrymandered map, but the U.S. Constitution prohibits its use in 2026 and beyond. The race-based, gerrymandered maps passed by the California Legislature are unlawful and unconstitutional, said First Assistant Attorney General Bill Osley of the Central District of California. The U.S. Department of Justice is moving swiftly to prevent these illegal maps from tainting our upcoming elections. California is free to draw congressional maps, but they may not be drawn based on race. The department's motion to intervene in Tangipia et al. versus Newsom is pending before the U.S. District Court for the Central District of California. Assistant Attorney General Harmid K. Dilan has been recused from this case. Principal Deputy Assistant Attorney General Jesus A. Ossete will represent the department on this matter. Wow. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And next, we have the illustrious Charles Shin.
Illustrious is right.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning to the board members. God bless America. My name is Charles Shin, S.H.I.N.N. I'm a retired Marine and a concerned citizen. Before you, there should be two forms. The first one, for familiarization, is the NVRA form. On one side is eight D two, which is the start of the removals, for removing folks off the voter rolls who no longer live here, died, or are in prison, or mentally incompetent to vote. And on the backside of that form is California elections and inactive reasons for removing people from active to inactive, and then canceled reasons. And may I recommend, if you don't already have your elections folder for concerned citizens, to, hot tip is start acquiring this paperwork in a folder, because we'll be referring to a lot of these topics this year. Next is from the Elections Code, notification to voter, change of address, which is 2225 Elections Code and 2226, change of address procedures, turning, taking folks to inactive. And then on the backside, reasons for cancellation of registration, which is Elections Code 2201. The last election that we just, well, not Prop 50, because we don't have the stats on that, the February twenty-five of 2025, just to show why we're concerned about... on that, the February twenty-five of twenty-twenty-five, just to show why we're concerned about cleaning up the voter rolls, active issued, not returned. We have a hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-five registered people that just let their ballot go to the garbage dump, I guess, and then we had five-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixteen issued undeliverable. I will be followed by my friend Mercy Penya.
Good morning, Ms. Penya, welcome.
Good morning. I passed out a, I'm gonna talk about the Assembly Bill nine thirty.
Can you spell your name, ma'am?
Oh, Mercy, M-E-R-C-Y, Penya, P-E-N-A.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm gonna discuss, the California bill will cost, will make ballots recounts more costly. A new California bill, Assembly Bill nine thirty, would make election recounts more expensive. The legislation, which was approved by the Assembly, which was approved by Governor Newsom on October third, and it was also filed by the Secretary of State October third of twenty-twenty-five, which was approved by the Assembly, has headed to the State Senate, would also allow non-voters to serve on paid recount boards. That has led some Republican legislators to state that this would allow non-citizens to be hired to count votes. While the bill would make counts more costly, it would also make them easier. Recount requesters would have the option to select the batch order in which the ballots are recounted, which could make it easier to ascertain whether the cost of the recount is worth sustaining. Assembly Bill nine thirty authored by Assemblyman Chris Ward of San Diego would require the individuals or groups requested, requesting the state's rare recounts to pay each morning for each day of staffing the recount boards that count the votes. The legislation also removes the requirements that the recount boards staffed by the individuals, appointed by the local elections officials, have to be voters. Democrats are claiming AB nine thirty doesn't allow non-citizens to count ballots, but have proof in plain English from the bill itself, said Assemblyman Carl DiMaggio from San Diego. It inserts words "individuals," where words "voters" of the county used to be, eliminating citizenship as factors for appointees of recounted boards. According to the analysis of the Bill of the Assembly Elections Committee, this change appears to be consistent with other recent changes in the state elections laws that allowed non-voters, including individuals who are legally permanent residents and students who are not yet old enough to register to vote, to serve as election workers at polling places and voting centers. The committee analysis also found that the bill would also repeal an existing law that requires recount board members to be paid the same as the jurisdiction pays to its poll workers. It can be challenged to find individuals who are willing to work on recount boards for the same compensation that is paid for the poll workers, the committee analysis said. Such a change, however, is likely to increase the cost of the voter-requested recounts, concluded the committee. Notably, the bill will also allow for the recounts by using scanned ballot images instead of reexamining the original ballots. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Penya. Are there other members of the public that would like to address this board on matters within our jurisdiction but not on today's specific agenda? Good morning, sir, welcome. Can you state and spell your name, please?
Mike Guyan from Mojave, G-U-Y-A-N. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Most of you already know my situation, so today I wanted to bring forward a case that mirrors mine almost exactly, Camara versus Municipal Court. In Camara, the resident asserted his constitutional rights when inspectors tried to enter his home, and he was arrested for simply standing on those rights. The Supreme Court ruled in his favor, because asserting your rights cannot, can never be treated as a crime. The only difference between Camara and me is this, Camara fought from inside his home. I stood my ground in the substandard building and now in the streets. Because Kern County misclassified me, I have provided your own code-compliance history with highlights. On page one, county staff calls me tenant on sight, therefore confirming that I was lawful resident, part of a protected class under state and constitutional law. Yet only weeks later, that lawful status collapsed in your own records. I become former tenant, former tenant squatting, squatter, occupant, unpermitted occupant, and finally, I am arrested, all without ever seeing a judge, without due process, and with no lawful order ever stripping me away from my protective status. That, that is a deterioration of my lawful standing in real time created entirely by your own documentation. Camara asserted his rights and was protected by the Supreme Court. I asserted my rights to protect my home, my belongings, my lawful status, and instead of constitutionally protected, I was mislabeled until I disappeared from the law. Even after, even after my criminal court dismissed case and furtherance to justice, Kern County still refuses to restore the lawful status that your own records first recognized. There is no lawful basis for Kern County to continue treating me as if we were ever unlawful. So I end this with one question that only the Board of Supervisors can answer. How much longer is Kern County going to deprive us of the duty that is owed to us as lawful residents, a duty your own documents created, acknowledged, and then ignored? Thank you.
Good, Mr. Guyan. Supervisor Parley, I see you've punched in.
Thank you so much for that, Mike, and I feel for your situation. I've talked to you personally, my staff have, and I know county staff have talked to you about it, too, before. Like Kendra, I'm gonna ask County Council to, you know, come up with some sort of, maybe, written response to what Mike has said. Also, that, you know, maybe there's a possibility for, for some sort of vouchers or something to help you with your situation. I'm not sure, but I want to carry that conversation maybe a little bit with, with the CIO also. But I, I think we need a little bit determination from a legal side that gets the mic. And Kendra, I don't know if you have any comments now, or if you'd just like to have something in writing at some point.
Yes, we will look into it. Our staff has been working with Mr. Guyan, we've met with him. We will, we're continuing to examine the records he continues to provide us, and we will get something to him in writing, and we'll hopefully get that to him soon.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
You know, Mike, my office is always open to you. You can go upstairs right now, grab a soda, whatever, hang out, talk to my staff, but, but right now, I think that's the direction we need to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Parley. Thank you, Kendra. Okay, any other members of the public at this time? Okay, looks like we have one more. Hello, good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Board. How are you today?
Very good.
My name is Tomasena Rivers, T-O-M-A-S-E-N-A, last name Rivers, R-I-V-E-R-S. I'm gonna try to see if I can split it in two here. Okay, so the first thing I did when I got here is, my son is disabled, and for the first few years of school, you know, he was kicking students, punching, teachers had to take off time because my son needed the support, so we were in, we're in treatment. So Plans Elementary School has to be like, to me, the top, the top school out here, because there's so many disabled children in Kern County, and they all have been going to Plans. And my son went from not doing his homework, okay, to literally top math. He's learning his reading, best friends with everyone. He wants the kids come in, he wants to be their friend, so when they come in, they feel welcome. So I, I know, I'm trying to make this work quick. Okay, this is going fast, thanks. Okay, so I went upstairs to the CIO office, I left my information, and I noticed that there was a butt-load of ton left in the budget, and I know this is the Board of Supervisor, and you guys care about our community and our county, right? So I'm here to ask you, because they sell chips, they do things for dances, they try to get funds for their school, they're proud, they're too proud to ask, so I'm here as a mother, I'm asking if you guys would, I have the tax ID thing I'll take to them, but can you please, I'm trying to get a donation or a grant, I tried to do the application, their library needs new books, they need new supplies, so I'm gonna work on a proposal with them, but please, if you guys could look into it, I'm trying to get a donation of five thousand dollars to this school, because this school has done so much for our community, and the children who grow and evolve are able to live. So please forgive me for flip-flopping here. Okay, so I put in a complaint, and it was denied by the Board, okay? And I'm just here to notify the Board. Look, I, I really know everybody wants to make a change, I'm about to run out of time, but as of the first week of December, I will be filing a federal lawsuit against Kern County. That would be Kern County Council, that would be the Director of the Welfare Department, and CDS as well. I'm letting Mom and Dad handle it. They're not protected by sovereign immunity, and I have over fifteen different federal crimes that they have broken, so I really want to work it out. I really wish someone would talk to me and work it out before I go on record with this. I already have a lawsuit against the Commissioner of Social Security for the same actions of the Welfare Department. So please, hear me when I speak, because I'm not gonna stop, and I am a fighter, and again, I had nothing, came from nothing, and now I have the knowledge to change, so I'm gonna use it. So please have a wonderful day, and I'm sorry for taking up your time, and I hope you guys have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Bye, darling.
Any other members of the public at this time? Okay, we're gonna close the public presentations, and I'll ask my gentlemen colleagues if you have any announcements or reports, gentlemen? No, okay. So we're then going to adjourn. I do need a motion to adjourn to close session. We will return at two PM for our afternoon board session and the remainder of agenda items for today. Thank you, David. We have a motion to adjourn. We're adjourned.